Good evening. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order this Monday, November 14th. If you would please, I'm asking Pastor Owens to come forward to give the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
May we bow our heads. Father, we thank you so much for allowing us to be here in this place and space. God, thank you for our county commissioners and their staff that helps to lead Lee County. God, we know you have your hand upon our county. Thank you for everyone who takes a part of this. Now, God, be in this meeting, guide it, lead it, and direct it, and that you get the glory out of it. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to say thank you for everyone being here this evening. Just a reminder to silence your cell phones, and if you didn't and it goes off, we'll just stop and wait for you to answer it. I used to embarrass teachers and students all the time with that. I need to add to the agenda, to item 7C, a request to appear before the board on item Anything else for the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I request you move item 2J from the consent agenda to Old Business.
Moving item 2J from the consent agenda to Old Business, and it will be under 6C, regarding the full-time finance and circulation library assistant, number 2. Any other changes? Additional items? Do I have a motion to adopt the addition, excuse me, the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Question? Motion been made to accept the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And do I have an approval for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Many pages here today. All right. If I could ask for Mr. Spivey to come forward, please?
This is a proclamation honoring retiring employee Russell Spivey and his years of service to Lee County. Whereas Russell Spivey has been with Lee County government since 1981, and whereas after starting his career with the county as a maintenance worker 1, he has promoted five times since then. First as maintenance worker 3 from 1982 to 1985, second as assistant maintenance supervisor from 1985 to 1990, third as assistant maintenance director from 1990 to 1992, fourth as facility and ground maintenance superintendent from 1992 to 2007, and finally to general services director in 2007, and whereas Mr. Spivey and the general services department have been instrumental in a number of projects, including the Lee County Government Center renovations after a fire occurred, the McSwain Center, the general services building on 5th Street, the Lee County Water System, Sanford Lee Nature Center, the Sand Lee Dam restoration, the industrial park improvements and road construction at the Central Carolina Enterprise Park, jail renovations and fuel system installation at General Services, and whereas Russell Spivey's genuine care and dedication to Lee County government has been prevalent throughout his years of service, providing meaningful and significant impact to the lives, facilities, and projects that he has had the opportunity to oversee and support during his tenure, and whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to congratulate the achievements of Mr. Spivey and to express appreciation to him for his dedicated service and many contributions to Lee County. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that it recognizes and honors the 41 years of commitment that Russell Spivey has invested in furthering the mission and purpose of Lee County government, and it wishes for Mr. Spivey continued success in all his future endeavors, presented this 14th day of November 2022 by myself and attested by Haley Hall, the clerk, to the board. I can't say enough, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Amen. I'd like, thank each and all of you so much. Such an honor, but I thank God for giving me the strength and wisdom to have done all this over the many years I have. But my main thing is I've had good support. Thank you, Dr. Crumden, for allowing me the opportunity to step forward and to be the director. I thank Lisa, all the commissioners, and for all the support that y'all have given me, the attorneys, Whitney, and everybody, and all the department has too. But really, I do appreciate my staff. There's no way, a good leader is not a good leader without good staff, and I've got a lot of my staff members here. I'm grateful for each one of them. One thing that helps me as a leader is being able to work out in the field. I've laid a good path, as well as Dr. Crumden and I have, and I know Robbie will do a good job to assist in moving forward and looking after staff and doing the things that I do, and I know he will. He's worked closely with me, and I appreciate him being here, too. But like I say, Mr. Reeves, thank you. I remember when you came on the board, and I remember my first time, I want to tell you an interesting story, talking about the Government Center renovation. I can remember that we ran into some soil problems there when we started in '87 on the sidewalk out front, and the manager at the time, Mr. Cowan, says, "You're going to have to go and talk to the commissioners about that." I was scared to death, and I'll be honest with you, I was, because, but I got to say, you know, the times I've came here, and I got to say a lot of commissioners stepped up to me and supported me when times were tough, and I really truly appreciate it, and thank each and all of you. And again, and I thank Joyce and Dr. Crumden both for encouraging me to move forward, too, because, and Lisa, and a lot of the people that I've worked closely with over the years, I'll never forget you guys. And, you know, the part about retiring, I'm looking forward to retiring, but I'm going to miss all you guys. I miss, I really enjoy what I do, but I want to thank one very important person here tonight, and that's my wife. She doesn't like stuff like this, but I got her to come out, so that's great. I might have given her compliments, but I really appreciate everything everybody has done. Thank you so much.
If we could also have the general services staff that are here tonight come forward to get a picture with Mr. Spivey, along with Diane.
And everybody on the board come forward so we can get a picture with the group.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes. I have a motion to approve the resolution for Mr. Spivey. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. It's my honor to present a resolution honoring retiring commissioner and vice chairman, Arianna LaValle. Whereas Arianna LaValle was elected to the Lee County Board of Commissioners for District 4 on November 6th of 2018, and whereas Commissioner LaValle became the youngest commissioner in the state of New York, no, excuse me. Guess who's going north for Thanksgiving? Whereas Commissioner LaValle became the youngest commissioner in the state of North Carolina, elected in 2018, and has served as vice chair from December 2020 through December 2022. And whereas she served on the Johnston County, excuse me, Johnston Lee Hornet Community Action Board, Juvenile Crime Prevention, Lee County Partnership for Children and Families, Interlocal Committee with Sanford City, and is an alternate delegate on the Triangle J Council of Governments. And whereas Commissioner LaValle participated in the Lee County Young Commissioners 4-H program, contributing her knowledge and talents to our rising young leaders, and has taught 4th and 5th graders at Life Springs Church Kids Ministry for two years. And whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the achievements of Vice Chair, Commissioner Arianna LaValle, and to express appreciation to her for her dedicated service and many contributions to Lee County. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that it congratulates Vice Chair, Commissioner Arianna LaValle for a career in public service and a genuine interest in and concern for Lee County, and it wishes for Commissioner LaValle continued success in all her future endeavors for both her and her family. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the meetings of the board and a copy presented to Vice Chair, Commissioner LaValle, presented this 14th day of November 2022, signed by me as well as Haley Hall, clerk, to the board. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution honoring retiring commissioner and vice chair, Arianna LaValle? Motion's been made to approve the resolution honoring retiring commissioner and vice chair, Arianna LaValle. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Can we get a picture up front here with everybody?
I appreciate it. Congratulations. Very good.
I'm going to ask your family to come forward, please.
This proclamation is honoring and recognizing the longevity of service to Lee County citizens as Commissioner of District 1, Robert T. Reeves, Sr. Whereas Robert T. Reeves, Sr. was elected to the Lee County Board of Commissioners in 1990 and consecutively re-elected Commissioner of District 1 eight times in 1994, 98, 2002, 2006, 2010, 2014, 2018, and recently in 2022. And whereas Robert T. Reeves, Sr. is recognized as the longest-serving commissioner for the county of Lee, serving the residents of Lee County Commission District 1 for more than 32 years, and whereas Robert T. Reeves, Sr. was awarded the Order of the Longleaf Pine in 2020, the highest honor the state of North Carolina awards for public service. And whereas Robert T. Reeves, Sr. served on the Lee County Rest Home Nursing Home Advisory Board, the Transportation Advisory Board, COLTS, Senior Services Advisory Board, and the Lee County Government Finance Committee, which he also chaired. And whereas Commissioner Reeves has worked to foster economic development in Lee County, better K-12 education, and improve Central Carolina Community College, prevented the installation of a hazardous waste dump in Lee County, and worked to improve the quality of life for all residents. And whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize this achievement of Commissioner Robert T. Reeves, Sr., and to express its appreciation to him for his many years of dedicated service, and that Commissioner Reeves continues his contributions to Lee County. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that it congratulates Commissioner Robert T. Reeves, Sr. for his long record of public service to the 1st District and for his genuine interest and concern for Lee County, and it wishes Commissioner Reeves continued success on the Lee County Board of Commissioners. And be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of the meeting of the board and a copy be presented to Commissioner Reeves, presented this 14th day of November 2022, signed by myself as well as Haley Hall, clerk, to the board. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution honoring retiring commissioner and vice chair, Arianna LaValle? Motion's been made to approve the resolution honoring retiring commissioner and vice chair, Arianna LaValle. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Thank you. We need a group picture now. Thank you.
Okay. Let me say this thing. Thank you. You know, you can't do this kind of work without working with good people. And the Lee County staff has always been my rock. I will tell you, in 1990, I was a complete novice, and there were two people that I would still have a hard time dealing with who turned out to be my best two mentors. That was Commissioner Gordon Wicker and Ms. Theatris Fields. I learned how important being involved in your community is from those two people specifically. I later met Mr. Spivey, whom I will tell you is one of the most dedicated employees I've ever known anywhere. Not a single, not a single charge has he had that he didn't put 100% in it and the interest of the county first and foremost. Those are the kind of people who want to serve you, audience. Those are the kind of staff that Lee County has that will look after all of us regardless of where we are and at what level in life we might be. This is what you want in your community. And I thank my board for giving me this honor. I've been through a lot of boards, but this one in particular is very refreshing because we're going to be able to do some things here in a neighborhood that hasn't had a facelift in 32 years, as a matter of fact. So thank each of you. I sincerely appreciate this honor, and I will treasure it for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Thank you for that opportunity and time to recognize these three outstanding individuals. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for reappraisal, public hearing schedules, standards, and rules. Mr. Brown?
I don't know how you follow that.
Very carefully.
But I certainly appreciate my wife. Tonight, we come before you with the asking for a public hearing regarding the schedule, standards, and rules with the 2023 reappraisal. We asked in preparation for the 2023 reappraisal, North Carolina General Statutes 105317 requires the schedule of values for market and for present use value to be presented to the board. We presented the schedules October 17th of '22, an affidavit of publication of the notice of public hearing has been attached to this agenda item. The notice was run into Sanford Herald on Tuesday, October 18th. The schedules have been made available to the public in our office as well as the two public libraries, the one in Sanford and the one in Broadway. The statute always also requires the board to hold a public hearing regarding the schedules. That's what we're actually doing now. And in addition, our office is looking to ask the board to adopt the schedules on December 5th.
I now open the public hearing for the, regarding the 2023 reappraisal schedule, standards, and rules. All right. If you are willing to stand forward, come forward and speak on behalf of the public hearing, anyone on behalf of the 2023 reappraisal schedule? Anyone opposed to the 2023 reappraisal schedule? Any questions of the board for Mr. Brown? Seeing there is none, no one for, no one against, I now close the public hearing. Thank you, sir. Moving on, there are no public comments for this evening. Under Old Business, approve the attached agreement with Outreach Mission to appropriate $315,000 to use for homeless services.
And I believe...
I can do that one.
That's Whitney.
Okay. So in March of 2022, Outreach Missions approached the Board of Commissioners requesting the funding, and at its March 7th, '22 meeting, the board did vote to appropriate the $315,000 to use for homeless services. And at the meeting, it was, the vote was made to bring the agreement back to the board once we determined how we were going to break it up. So the agreement is now approached, attached, excuse me, regarding the $315,000 for the homeless services, and it will be paid over an 18-month period quarterly. They'll have to submit attachments and information each quarter. And I'm happy to answer any other questions if the board has any.
Any questions of Whitney regarding the Outreach Mission appropriation of $315,000 for homeless services? I've lost my link. Commissioner, Commissioner Levick?
That's right.
No questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'd offer a motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve. Continuing with questions, Commissioner?
No, sir.
Commissioners? Commissioner, connect. Commissioner Carver? Motion's been made to approve the attached agreement with Outreach Mission to appropriate $315,000 to, for use for homeless services. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No? Can I have a show of hands on the ayes, please? And four for, and three opposed. Show of hands for opposed. Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to Lee County Project 48390222 Sports Complex update. Yes, sir?
Good evening, board. My name is Tridel Atkins, Deputy Director of Development Services under Mr. Santiago Heraldo of Development Services Department. I'm here in reference to item 6B, request for information update on Lee County Project 4839-02-22 Sports Complex. In your attachments, you will have found McAdams' presentation, which I'm about to bring up Mr. Jason Galloway for McAdams to provide you with project updates.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jason Galloway. I'm project manager of McAdams and the project manager for the multi-sports complex. It's my pleasure to come before you tonight on behalf of our design... We presented the schedules October 17th of '22. An affidavit of publication of the notice of public hearing has been attached to this agenda item. The notice was run into Sanford Herald on Tuesday, October the 18th. The schedules have been made available to the public in our office as well as the two public libraries, the one in Sanford and the one in Broadway. The statute always also requires the board to hold a public hearing regarding the schedules. That's what we're actually doing now. And in addition, our office is looking to ask the board to adopt the schedules on December 5th.
I now open the public hearing for the regarding the 2023 reappraisal schedule, standards and rules. All right, if you are willing to stand forward, come forward and speak on behalf of the public hearing, anyone on behalf of the 2023 reappraisal schedule? Anyone opposed to the 2023 reappraisal schedule? Any questions of the board for Mr. Brown? Seeing there is none, no one for, no one against, I now close the public hearing. Thank you, sir. Moving on, there are no public comments for this evening. Under all business, approve the attached agreement with outreach mission to appropriate $315,000 to use for homeless services. And I believe...
So in March of 2022, Outreach Missions approached the Board of Commissioners requesting the funding. And at its March 7th, '22 meeting, the board did vote to appropriate the $315,000 to use for homeless services. And at the meeting, it was, the vote was made to bring the agreement back to the board once we determined how we were going to break it up. So the agreement is now approached, attached, excuse me, regarding the $315,000 for the homeless services and it will be paid over an 18-month period quarterly. They'll have to submit attachments and information each quarter. And I'm happy to answer any other questions if the board has any.
Any questions of Whitney regarding the Outreach Mission appropriation of $315,000 for homeless services? I've lost my link. Commissioner, Commissioner Lovick, no questions? Commissioner Reeves?
I'd offer a motion to approve.
Motion been made to approve. Continuing with questions, Commissioner? Commissioners? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver? Motion been made to approve the attached agreement with Outreach Mission to appropriate $315,000 to, for use for homeless services. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? No? Can I have a show of hands on the ayes, please? And four for, and three opposed. Show of hands for opposed. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to Lee County Project 483902-22 Sports Complex update. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Board. My name is Tridel Atkins, Deputy Director of Development Services under Mr. Santiago Heraldo of Development Services Department. I'm here in reference to Item 6B, request for information update on Lee County Project 4839-02-22 Sports Complex. In your attachments, you will have found McAdams' presentation, which I'm about to bring up Mr. Jason Galloway for McAdams to provide you with project updates.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jason Galloway. I'm the project manager of McAdams and the project manager for the multi-sports complex. It's my pleasure to come before you tonight on behalf of our design team to give you all a project update on where we stand with this exciting project. All right, so first I wanted to touch base with you all on the budget. We know the budget is always of utmost importance. So as we go through the project progress, we'll be mentioning some terms. Just want to make sure I cover that. The first thing we're doing as a strategy is to do cost estimates at every milestone. We've already done two cost estimates thus far, one at the conclusion of our concept and then another one to test some of the revisions that we made to the plans. We still have two left to do, one around 70% completion and another at 90%. And that we send out to a professional cost estimator so that we make sure that we get as accurate a cost as we can, given the volatility of today's market. The second thing that we do to kind of manage our budget is we provide construction alternates. You'll see two specific alternates, one specific alternate as we go through this plan. And I'll mention that here in just a few minutes. But this allows some flexibility with the design. If the project comes back over budget, we're able to remove alternates to make sure that the project remains in budget. Okay, so as far as the base bid for this project, we're showing three U-sized baseball fields. Those are 225-foot depth. One full-size 400-foot baseball field. Two full-size synthetic turf multi-use fields. That does equate to four 12U fields. Two full-size natural turf fields. That's also four 12U fields. A playground and picnic area and a maintenance and office facility. So all those are included in the base bid for the project as it stands currently. We are proposing an alternate for two additional full-size natural turf fields and a restroom, picnic shelter and some walking trails. And you see on your sheet in front of you, this is the current layout for the plan, showing baseball in the top left, multi-use fields towards the center of the site and the playground and picnic area, kind of in between the two spaces. So equal access depending on the activities for that day. Taking a closer look at what we're proposing, we have the four fields all located towards the top of the site, close to Broadway. The two full-size synthetic turf fields are front and center when you first come into the park. They'll be the first thing you see as you come in and they will, they will stand out quite prominently. The next thing you'll see is the playground facility to the bottom of the page there. They'll include a playground, picnic shelter, an event lawn and some parking. Also potentially some food truck parking for events and special events, whatever those may be. This next page shows in the base bid, that field to the top left-hand corner. That's a natural turf field with two youth fields. There's one just to the north of it, kind of off-screen, that wouldn't be included in the base bid. There's the parking lot to the bottom of the page and those four 12U fields are what we're proposing as the alternate, just to make sure that we're staying within budget with the project. It also includes that picnic shelter and walking trails. And as far as schedule goes, we just wrapped up the schematic designs. We're refining our concept. We've just submitted our technical review committee supplemental. That was on November 1st. We are currently working towards a design development, which is about 75% complete. We'll send that out for another cost estimate to make sure that we are staying within budget. And we'll use the months between December and February to obtain all of our construction permitting and construction documents. And we are planning to advertise for bid in mid-March for bid opening in mid-April. That concludes my presentation.
Questions of Mr. Galloway? Commissioner Carver?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lavalley? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Lovick?
No questions.
Okay, I did have a question from a constituent, but you addressed it regarding food trucks and the ability to connect for them.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. We have no further questions. Thank you very much, sir. Let's get it done. My granddaughter harassed me on the way here, so...
Good, good. We're all excited and appreciate y'all's time.
Yes, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is under, is the position request for a full-time finance and circulation library assistant.
Good evening, Commissioners and County Administration Team. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak with you this evening. You have before you a request for a new position at the Lee County Libraries. In the 2022-2023 budget, the library's part-time salary budget allotted funds to hire a finance library assistant II for 15 hours per week. This position was designed to assist the circulation supervisor and the library director with billing, cash handling, inventory, assets, grants and more. As of today, the position remains unfilled. While we have searched for the right person with the experience and knowledge to fill this position, it has also grown increasingly apparent that this position will be better serving the needs of our library as a full-time benefited position. As I'm sure you are all aware, the library will be seeking additional positions as programs and services continue to grow and we prepare to move into our new library facility. However, the need for more staff is right now. By approving this position to be full-time benefited, we will not only attract the best candidate to meet the updated job description responsibilities which I provided with you, for you, in the packets, but we will also be able to provide additional staffing hours towards current needs at the circulation desk and our various library projects. The library is requesting the new permanent position of full-time finance library assistant II to be added to our department. We will not need additional funds added to our budget this fiscal year due to vacancies. We will be incorporating the additional position into our salary budget for subsequent years. Thank you for your consideration and I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Beth. Commissioner Lovick, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Lavalley? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
The only comment was that I think with this proposal, we're expecting that we would put, include it in our budget for next year and continue that position so that when we hire that, that person, they can have an expectation of continuing on.
And that was statement was added to the agenda item online.
And Commissioner Sharp made the motion to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Under new business, we have the Life Springs Dream Center request for funding. Pastor Salz and Pastor Owens.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Smith and all of you Commissioners and staff. And Mr. Crumpton, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to be here. We so much appreciate it. My name is Dale Salz and I'm the lead pastor of Life Springs Church. Life Springs Church started in 1980 under the name of Sanley Chapel and we have actively served this community and the neighborhoods in the community for about 42 years now. We, you see us in neighborhoods, you often see our blue shirts and things. You'll see us in the Wingers parking lot on Wednesday night with about 80 people serving there. You'll see us in the jails and places around the community. We have been blessed and we're very grateful for that and we recognize that. We've been able not only to move several times and develop a property here, we're continuing to develop. We're building a four-and-a-half million dollar building here in this county and we've also been able to go to other counties. We have a campus in Western Harney, in the Anderson Creek area, and we're starting a campus in Selma in Johnston County. All the while, we've been involved in community services, community service and trying to bless our community. And that has exploded with growth. And we have felt like now it is time for us to start a separate organization with its own 501(c)(3), it's an education-based 501(c)(3) to help us facilitate a lot of our service opportunities. It's called the Life Springs Action Team. I'm the chairman of the board of the action team and we have a couple of other board members here. If they would stand, two of them couldn't make it, but these are our, two of our board members that are here. And I don't want to get it twisted either. You can tell the blue shirts. We are starting a separate 501(c)(3), but it has the full backing 100% of Life Springs Church, which is about 1,000 to 1,500 volunteer base. And we brought some of them with us. Would you guys, the Life Springs family, thank these Commissioners for hearing us? Come on, put your hands together. Thank you. So the first project we would like to do under the action team is start a dream center. You could research that. The first one was made in LA, Los Angeles, and they have sprung up all around the nation. And they've been very successful reducing crime and reducing the suicide rate and reducing homelessness and helping with mental illness and so many other things. And I don't know if I know how to do this or not, but we're going to try. Yeah, I didn't do very good at it at all. We'll stop right there and I'll let you mess it up from there. I mean, take it over from there. We feel like that Lee County could benefit from a dream center. And so our dream center to start out with will focus on preventing human trafficking, education and therapeutic activities and community building, which we've already been heavily involved in. For us to do this dream center with the excellence that we believe that Lee County deserves and needs, we need additional, we need help financially from our community. And so we're asking you to help us financially to be able to do this. Our board has hired our first director of this, who has been a partner of mine in ministry now for about six or seven years, who's a Lee County native, who's come from the bottom and cone up. His name is Pastor Daniel Owens. He's our first director and he's leading the initiative and already doing the work. So I'll let him take the presentation from here.
I'm going to try not to preach. Anytime you get a pole in the mic, you want to preach. But anyway, I'm going to be good today. So I want to thank you Pastor Dale and I also want to thank this Board of Commissioners who have done so much in our community. Because I have lived in Lee County all my life and I love Lee County. I have been a recipient of the service that the dream center will bring to the people of Lee County and I know firsthand how much these services are needed to help our residents here in Lee County. Now, in this three areas, the dream center will be providing services. We have two major ingredients that makes this a success. Number one, everything we're going to talk about, it talks, it's through building relationships. That's, that's how we connect with everybody that we deal with. Number two is consistency. Show up when you say you're going to show up and always make promises and keep those promises that you made. So number one we're going to talk about is preventing human, oh, okay, you told me, there you go. Preventing human trafficking. Now, preventing human trafficking, we do that through hotel. We provide essentials and basic needs. Through our jail, we provide life skills. We provide a listening ear. We provide rehab. We also, through our community in our adopt the block, we look at signs of human trafficking that we identify and get them to a safe house or a safe place. We have partnered with Cry Freedom Mission in this area and as of today, we have rescued 18 individuals out of human trafficking here in Lee County. And out of those 18, out of those 18, 11 was right from right here in Lee County. And matter of fact, today, we was able to get a young lady that was in the Lee County jail into a safe house through our project, through preventing human trafficking. Number two is education and therapeutic activities. Education and therapeutic activities. This is where we work with people with life-controlling issues such as mental illness, addiction, justice-involved and generational poverty. Our goal is to say, to help them sustain and maintain a better quality of life. We do this by support groups, life skill classes and our re-entry program through CCCC and our residential rehab that we partner with Adult Teen Challenging. And in this area, we also partner with the Lee County Sheriff Department, Lee County Pre-Trial, Lee and Harney County District Attorney Office and also Central Carolina Community College. And I want to stop here because we have some of those partners in here in the room today, from Mr. Gray Singletary to Dean, we have the director of Teen Challenge, we have also Pre-Trial. So all our partners, if you'll stand if you don't mind. Thank you so much, all our partners that we work with here in Lee County. And so, and the last one we do is, is one of my favorites, is community building. And we do this by adopt the block. And we go to qualify census tracts communities here in Lee County to build relationship in a consistent manner to identify and provide essential needs of the community. We also identify long-term goals of residents and help them achieve those goals by connecting them with the necessary resource. One of those is kids jam. Kids jam build relationships with the ages between four and 14. And we help with adverse childhood trauma through resilience-building intervention. And we're able to connect with kids, help them with their homework and let them know how valuable they are and also to help parents there in those qualified census area to be better parents because I needed that when I was growing up because I was from the projects too. Case management. This is why our team help individuals with vocational rehab. And in this area, we partner with Sanford Housing Authority, ACCO Real Estate, Salvation Army, Lee County Partnership for Children and Families and others. So why do we need a dream center? This is so sensitive. There you go. Why do we need a dream center? This is why. To prevent family violence, to provide a community-based child abuse prevention, to assist with homelessness, to prevent, prevention of mental illness, combating the opioid epidemic, resource management of mental illness and the re-entry for our justice-involved. This is why we need a Life Springs Dream Center here in Lee County. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen. Question, Commissioner Lovick?
Just to comment, I would like to see some of our opioid money when we get that to help. You know, this is definitely a mental illness in some situations and I'd like to see some of that money when we start receiving that toward this. Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I have nothing more. Thank you. No question.
Commissioner Sharp?
I just want to thank Dale and Daniel and Shane Wilson for all the good work that you guys have been doing in the community. It hadn't gone unnoticed and I know you guys have been doing it a long time. You didn't come here to get thanks from me or us, but I do appreciate it. I worked 30 years out in the field with probation parole and, and for the longest time, I'd come by Wingers and see all you guys out there helping the people in the community and I appreciate that.
I do have one, that was a comment. I do have one question. How do you decide where, you know, where to refer the clients to once you have someone that has a problem?
Well, what we do is we do with our case manager, we identify the issue, whether it be rehab, drug addiction, whether it be human trafficking, whether it be simply generational poverty, and we work with them to find out what is it that they need and then we assess their needs and then we refer them out to what resources that they need to accomplish those goals.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lavalley?
No questions. Just a comment that the dream center really is, has already been functioning here in Lee County for several years. The heart of what you do has been occurring. And so to have it formally recognized now is exciting. Especially when our board has put such an emphasis on mental health. I mean, our whole country recognizes that that's an issue. And the fact that that's such a huge piece of the overall picture of the dream center is, is very important. So that's something I see a lot of value in and I absolutely support this.
Commissioner Connect?
Now, are we working on a specific, specific building for the dream center?
We're praying for a specific building in the dream center, but not necessarily.
Is that what we're looking for at this present time?
We would like to find one. Yes, sir.
You still working on that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
I just wanted to make the observation that a county has the responsibility for the health and well-being of their citizens. And under our state constitution, when a county needs help doing that, then it's appropriate to use local funds to encourage you all. You have a track record, as Commissioner Lavalley said, of being able to make those contributions even without the dream center in place. And we definitely appreciate that and I hope that we eventually will be able to see that those financial needs that you have can be complemented by what we're doing here. It's impossible for the people that currently work in the county to have the kind of relationship and contact with these people that so desperately need direction. So we're thankful for the assistance that you all would be providing and I thank you for it.
Question I have, and it's in regards to if we were to use the ARPA funding, your request is asking for $500,000 over three years, of which $200,000 in the first year and $150,000 in both years two and three. And then the other question is for our staff, if we do get opioid funding, how much of that can we earmark for such a project?
We would have to look at it for the specific services that they would be implementing. And if it falls into one of the 12 categories under Schedule A of the MOU, then we could, there's no limit on how much funding you can set for any individual section under the MOU.
Any other questions?
As far as the ARPA funding, we had set aside, I think, 1.5 million for, for mental health services. So there's $500,000 there that could be used. So, there's five hundred thousand there that could be used for this project. In the agenda, we did not ask for the board to take a vote tonight. This is a very thorough application, probably one of the better applications that we've received, because of how thorough it was. But, you know, since it's the first time the board talked about it, you know, we, we were gonna push the vote back to the December, first December meeting, just so the board could review it if they felt that way, or the board can do whatever they want to tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Cumpden. With that, I ask that we move to approve the allocation of five hundred thousand in our ARPA funding for mental health to the Dream Center.
The motion's been made to approve the five hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funding for the mental health program for the Dream Center over the next three years. Any further discussion?
Well, I would take the position that this is very quick, in my opinion. We had other requests from, uh, other nonprofits that we've had cap the funding that they would be ineligible for, and we've had no discussion about how this is going to work. This is a three-year commitment, as I understand it. Is that correct or not?
Yes, sir.
In, in discussion on our nonprofits, that's for our nonprofit cap from our general fund, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we've treated the ARPA funding, obviously, a little differently. We gave the three hundred and fifteen thousand tonight to OMI out of that, so I would say yes, it was treated differently. But we have had other nonprofits, I remember the Salvation Army asked for funding for their Day Center, which because of the amount, the board did not approve. But there are, there are others, you know, on that list that were not approved, to Mr. Reeves's point.
Yeah, I would ask that we at least table it until the December meeting for more discussion.
Motion's been made to table till the December meeting for further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Point of order, can you discuss it, a motion to table? I don't know.
Oh.
Somebody needs to practice for this week. Thank you.
Yes, you can, um, that is debatable.
That is debatable, yes, you can discuss it.
You vote on the motion to table first, but I think what Mr. Carver was asking is, can you discuss the motion to table, and yes?
I, I'm just recommending that we vote no on the motion to table. And this is the kind of reasoning I'd have. First of all, I appreciate Commissioner Reeves being concerned about making sure we're heading in the right direction and consistent with decisions we've made before. But I, I believe that we always had the right to go ahead and, with the opportunity to approve other funding in addition to the funding that you mentioned that is taken out of the general, general fund as part of our budget process. And I guess the other thing about this is, this is such a clear, a clear contribution to what the county needs to be able to do to meet the crisis that we're finding in the, in the populations that they're addressing. It's a very clear explanation of what they propose and acceptable in terms of being able to use the monies that we've set aside in the American Rescue Plan. So, I recommend we do not table it, that we go ahead and vote on the motion as proposed by Commissioner Lavalley.
Any other discussion on tabling? Commissioner Lovick?
My only concern is, and I'm very much for this, um, like I say, there's been others come to us, and we kind of cap them and stop them from spending money. And I know this isn't actually our taxpayers' money we're giving here. With that, I would recommend, like I say, a little more thought maybe for it, to think about it. Where, how much, and where we want to spend money. I mean, we, we did three hundred fifteen thousand, now we're wanting to do five hundred thousand, so it's, just my thought.
Commissioner Sharp.
I don't want to be misunderstood, I, I support the project, but I would support tabling it, so there could be anything that needed to be worked out with that, before the December fifth meeting. But don't, I don't want to be mistaken that I support it. I do support your project.
Well, I, I want to say this, don't take my request for tabling it to be non-supported. I'd just like to know if we've done other folks the same way we're talking about doing here tonight. Three-year, a three-year contract is, or three-year grant is not something I'm familiar with, and if you, somebody can bring it to my attention, well, we've done that before, I'd be happy to entertain it. But I don't know of a situation we've done that. And we'll be starting something we've not done in the past, and I'd like to just know.
Commissioner Lavalley.
I certainly understand the points that have been made. I think that this is a unique ask in that we've allocated money from the federal ARPA money specifically for mental health, and this falls within that category that we've allocated money to, and it meets the needs, and I, I don't, I guess I just don't know what more time could answer, but I'm in, I'm in support of voting for it now.
Commissioner Connect.
Discussions on tabling?
No.
No, no discussion?
I mean, I don't have a.
All right, motion's been made to table until December fifth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Uh, can I have a show of hands of the ayes, please?
The ayes.
Three. And those opposed to tabling? Okay, moving on to the original motion. Uh, motion's been made, we've had discussion, any further?
Yes.
What would the vote?
Three, three, three to table, four opposed.
All right.
May I ask, um, with the board proceeding on with the motion, would you like us, like the OMI, to bring the contract back after the vote tonight, so we can work out some of those details?
Yes.
It's subject to MOU.
Okay, yeah, we'll have to put something together.
Okay.
Okay.
On the original motion to allocate the five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding over the next three years in order to deal with the county health and well-being of mental substance, and mental health and substance abuse provided by the Life Springs Program, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is classification and pay study. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. I am coming to ask to you to consider a classification and pay study for the county employees. In late two thousand nineteen and early two thousand twenty, a pay study of all Lee County positions was conducted. Changes were made, however, the pay study was not completely funded in two thousand twenty-one budget on the two thousand twenty-two budget or the two thousand twenty-three budget due to the cost of completing, of funding the plan. In discussions with the Board of Commissioners last month regarding the necessity of review of the Classification and Pay Plan, request of an RFP from Triangle J Governments to do a complete classification and pay study was initiated. Pay has become a significant issue and reasons for turnover in the workforce. The job market has changed, as we've talked about in the past. In the last year, all the surrounding counties, surrounding Lee County have completed pay studies and funded changes to their plans, and it's evident that Lee County Classification and Pay Plan needs to be reassessed. And this would be a complete pay study. This was where they would look at jobs, renew the job descriptions, and look at all the positions, meet with department directors, and have meetings with the employees. It would be a complete pay study. And, and the goal is to have it completed by March for the budget, the next year's coming budget. And my recommendation is to approve the professional services of Triangle J Council of Governments. The consultants would be David Hill and Bob Carter to perform a classification and pay study for Lee County Government.
Any questions of Joyce? Commissioner Lovick?
No, I'm good, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No, moved to approve.
Could you just tell me the difference between this pay study and the one, didn't we, we just done a pay study not long ago?
Two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, is there any?
It's, it's, now it's.
Things have changed?
Some changes. I can give you an example that we got today, I just, I got it written down somewhere. We had an example I can give you today. In another county close to us, this is what they've done in the last two years. In August of two thousand one, they gave ten percent increase to their law enforcement. In January of two thousand twenty-two, they gave another ten percent to all of their employees. July of two thousand twenty-two, they gave a two-point-three percent COLA and a one-point-five performance increase. In the fall of two thousand twenty-two, they just gave their law enforcement five percent again, and in the spring of two thousand twenty-three, they're gonna give additional five percent to law enforcement. And in July of twenty-three, they're gonna do a five percent COLA and a one-point-five performance increase. That's just since two thousand twenty-one. So, that shows you how far behind we're gonna be. We've got to do something to look at our positions and look at what we're paying our employees. Not to say that it will be a big increase, but we just need to stay consistent with the other counties around us, too.
Right, I understand, it's about.
Yeah, and we're gonna look at some private sector jobs, too, that are similar to what we do, too. We also ask those jobs to be looked at, too, compared salaries and everything.
And it's about retention, I'm assuming.
It's about retention, yes, sir, it is. I, I can give you an example. Another county next to us, I hate to call county names, but another county next to us, two weeks ago, or it's probably been a month, they, they're actually calling our employees in their offices. And the lady that I did the exit interview with, they offered her seven thousand dollars more than she was making. She didn't go look for a job, they called her. They, they're calling in these counties, it's, it's like a game, because we lose people to them, we get people, then they find out names, and then they call people. So, it's kind of a, it's a tough time right now, it really is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lavalley.
No questions.
Commissioner Connect.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carver.
No.
Do I have a motion? Oh, I did have a motion, Robert, Commissioner Reeves gave it. Motion's been made to approve the professional services of Triangle J Council Governments' Consultant David Hill, Bob Carter, perform a classification and pay study for Lee County Government with a budget impact of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you on behalf of our employees.
I'm glad you're looking at the private sector, too. That's important. In your study, I'm glad you're looking at the private sector, too.
Yes, we will.
Thank you, Joyce. Under item C, under new, new business, request to appear before the board, Mr. Patel.
Yes.
And the attorney, you're gonna start with this.
I was gonna say, your honor, but, but, Mr. Chair, um, just to give some background to Mr. Patel's request, um, he has requested to come before the Board of Commissioners apologize that it was added last minute, but it is on the agenda, um, and his, his request is also on the agenda along with the, and at your seat is the session law from nineteen eighty-seven, um, House Bill seven fifty-three that governs his request. This was related to the Act to Authorize Lee County to Levy a Room Occupancy Tax. This is related to, um, his August room occupancy tax that was paid late. He has made payment for the actual tax amount, so what he is requesting right now, and he can address the board, is waiver of the five percent counted county penalty, and then according to, um, House Bill seventy, seven hundred and fifty-three, he is also charged ten dollars a day for that late fee. Pursuant to Section one, um, D, it says that the Board of Commissioners may, for good cause shown, compromise or forgive the penalties imposed by this subsection. So, it's up to the board to determine whether or not Mr. Patel, Patel is able to provide to you all good cause shown, and whether or not you want to waive those penalties. Um, I did reach out to the, um, school board, because these were fun, funds that would turn over to the school board, um, and they said essentially leave it in the board's discretion as to whether or not you all find that there's good cause. The last amount I was able to determine, um, and I believe the tax office is here, that's four hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty cents for the, um, five percent county penalty, and the ten dollars a day was four sixty, but it might be a little more by, by now. But anyways, I will turn it over to Mr. Patel.
Hey, y'all, how's it going? So, are you guys able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. So, um, pretty much, um, if you, as you guys are aware, um, the room and occupancy tax for hotels is due at the fifteenth of each month, um, for the following month, so let's say for August, um, it'd be due by September fifteenth. So, for, in this case, for August, we, um, our, our room and occupancy tax total amount was nine thousand six hundred eighty-three and eighty-five cents. If you guys turn to the, the fourth page, uh, that I had, I handed out to everyone, I had made this, um, tack, or made this check out, true to Lee County Tax Collector on the fourteenth, um, I, it was given on the fifteenth, and it was even deposited, or it was taken out of our account on the sixteenth, as you see on that top left, um, screenshot from the bank. And it was even taken out of our account, and the posted balance on the top there, you can see where it was, it was sufficient funds to withdraw the amount as well, so there shouldn't have been no issue. Um, and then, on the right, you can see where it's the correct check number, the amount, and everything lines up properly. So, this was, this was given, um, back then. However, I was then on, so on the seventeenth, I was given, apparently this letter, the first page, was sent to me at the hotel. I don't know if it was lost in the mail or what, but we never received it. On, um, the second page, on the thirty-first of October, we were, we pretty much got that same letter again, and at this time, um, Mr., I believe, Mr. Brown from the tax office, he came and delivered this. So, as soon as I saw this, we checked on our records, and we saw that the money was given, the check was made out properly and everything, we, and then, we noticed that, I guess, for some reason, a few days later, some, for some reason, the check was returned back, which we were not aware of. No one contacted us, the, the, the tax office didn't contact us, the bank never sent us an alert or nothing. Um, as you can see, it said, apparently, the bank told the tax office that, it said, "Refer to Maker." Um, so I'm assuming the maker would be us, but we were, nothing was given to us until the seventeenth, this was mailed out, and on the thirty-first, when it was hand-delivered to us. So, obviously, as soon as we found out, um, the very next, that very same day, went to the tax office to try and figure out what the situation is, and I was told that it's pretty much out of their hands now. I would have to speak to, um, the county, which is you guys, and then this, the, the city as well, about waiving the, the extra fees, the penalties that were given to us, um, because, I, I mean, the thing is, like, we've always given our taxes on time, and in this case, too, we were, we had gave it. And the thing about this one is that it's, it's like, I guess, the, the ten percent, um, for the city of Sanford, the five percent penalty, it's, it's given after the thirty days of being delinquent. But let's say even if I received this first letter, um, on the seventeenth, that's more than thirty days than when I was initially given, so why was it not ever brought to our attention earlier when we could have rectified the situation? And therefore, I feel that, you know, we should be given some sort of leniency to sort of waive these penalties, because as you can see, we've, we've given it, and, and even the last page is actually the, so, I mean, this is also just me assuming things, but if you see the last page, that was our tax for, uh, for the month of September, which was obviously deposited, deposited on the seventeenth. So, I'm assuming that maybe the tax office deposited this check and then realized that So I'm assuming that maybe the tax office deposited this check and then realized that, oh, then this, the, the one from the previous month, it, it never, it for some reason had, came back, and that's when they had reached out to us. So, um, I mean, that's pretty much where we stand. Um, I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Commissioner Carver, do you have any questions?
I guess the only piece that I'm curious about is when you talk to the bank about why they sent the check back, there's no explanation for that?
They, they said, so it's the Truist Bank, um, right here in town, right on Hornet Boulevard, um, we, uh, we talked to our, them, and, I mean, they pretty much referred us to their, another division, and they, they're doing investigation on it, but, I mean, I mean, they say it'll take like sixty to ninety days for it to resolve. I mean, there's not really much else that-
And about how long have you been paying your taxes on time?
Like, since two thousand nine, I mean, uh, since the hotel was built. I mean, we've always given them on time. I mean, obviously, as you can see, for the month of September, we had gave that on time as well for, you know, in October. So, I mean, it's not like, why would we skip one month and then proceed to give on to the next month? It was obviously, we had no idea that the month of Au- August, that that check was for some reason returned.
Thank you.
Commissioner Connect? Questions?
Mr. Brown?
Do you want to talk to Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown?
Thoughts?
You have a question?
As, as far as any thoughts in regards to this, I mean, this is certainly, it's full discretion of the commissioners to do what they wish. It's your resolution as to the, you know, payment of the taxes and such. If you have any specific questions about kind of what happened or anything, would be to Netfizpatrick, our collector, and I'll be glad to try and answer any questions.
Why, this woman on the other side, you know, what are, what are your thoughts on what went, what happened?
You explain.
There were some kind of extenuating circumstances in that, um, the check, we received notification from the bank that the check was returned, and it was asked, did we want to resubmit the check? And we were going to do that, but our local branch never received the check back, and my then came along, when I followed up with finance to find out the status of the return, we were told that they had never received the actual check back in order for it to be redeposited. So at that point, we reached out to the school of government to find out what steps we should take, because this is unusual to receive a check back for room occupancy, and we wanted to make sure that we followed the correct guidelines. Do we charge the return check fee because it was returned? Do we charge the penalties for the city and the county, both because we have the responsibility to collect that? So there was some time issues in getting the answers and then following through with processing the check.
Why was it returned?
Excuse me?
Why was it returned?
Why? Uh, it said referred to maker, that's all we were provided.
So it came to you on time, you don't know why it got returned?
Well, I reached out to the bank, but they, they couldn't tell me. They said that the individual on the account would be the one that would have to call.
Commissioner Lavalley?
No questions.
Commissioner Sharp?
I'm confused on how much money has, has any of the money been paid? Is all the twelve thousand?
He's paid nine thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. He's paid the, he's paid the base amount, so what's the, between us and the city, the total amount of penalties or fees is two thousand one hundred and six dollars and twenty-seven cents, of which most of it is really the county's, right? Nine, nineteen hundred dollars.
Found out about it the very next day, I, or even that very same day I came, and then the next day I paid the original amount that we had been asked to give. And I would have obviously done that immediately if, if we had just been told initially that, hey, this check, you know, for some reason, the, the bank brought it back. I mean, we didn't know, the bank never sent us an alert, and we never got any alert from the county tax office as well, so.
Yeah, this is a very odd situation. I've, I've never heard of a, a check being, uh, referred to maker before, having worked for a bank in a prior life.
So with, with that being said, I, I'll make a motion that we, it looks like he's acted in good faith, I'll make a motion that we just waive the, the money that, the amount that-
We do have a policy on this, but this doesn't kind of fall in anything. This is kind of weird.
Yeah, that's property tax policy. This is, this is actually a lot different than, than this, and if we were to apply it, he's, he hasn't had an issue before on occupancy tax. The only issue that we, we came up as staff today and couldn't get an answer is whether, you know, on that, when you, uh, relieve people of penalties and interest on property taxes, the Board could become personally, um, liable for the tax. I'm not sure that that's the case here. Um, I don't think it's not, it doesn't say, say so in the nineteen eighty-seven bill, so I don't know why anybody would have, to waive, or to waive the fees on this one, because it's just, I don't know. I don't think it's our fault or, or his fault. I think it's just one of those things that happened, and probably will never happen again.
I agree.
The only time I could find one in the minutes was from two thousand and seven. It was a different circumstance, but that was the only time, and I talked to the net, but it was, this is the only time that, that I was able to find, other than two thousand and seven.
My ten years is the first time.
Commissioner Reeves, any questions?
Yeah, about Truist Bank.
That's what I was thinking.
They're not here.
I know. And they didn't respond when they were contacted. I agree with Commissioner Sharp, waive the penalties.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, I'm ready.
Motion been made to waive the penalties for Mr. Patel regarding the Truist Bank. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I've been relieved, sir.
Mr. Patel, thanks for coming out and talking to us.
I'm sorry.
Thanks for coming out.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thanks for coming out.
Oh, thank you very much.
Will, will you have to go to the city tomorrow?
I, so actually, I had reached out to the city the same time I'd reached out to the county. Thankfully, you got back to me back then on November third. City never got back to me, and then I left a message, and I, um, reached out again today, and finally, they, they told me to email them, so I did, so I hope, we'll see, I don't know.
Okay, take it easy, don't, don't burn yourself.
I mean, you know, as I said, like, it's, this is a, a awkward or weird situation that we've never ran into either, and so whenever we found out about it, we just want to rectify it as quick as possible. Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you.
City Council meets tomorrow night, you have a public comment period of three minutes.
Oh, is I can do that?
Yep.
Sure can.
See me and I'll speak on your behalf. Oh, my word. Thank you on that. All right, next item on the agenda is monthly financial sales tax reports.
Good evening, I'm filling in for Candace tonight, who is at the Finance Officers Conference, so, um, bear with me. You have before you in your agenda package the monthly financial report for September two thousand twenty-two. Um, as you can see on that report, we're running just slightly behind on property tax collections compared to last year, but as you all are aware, we don't get overly concerned at this point with that small differential. In reviewing its expenditures, the target's twenty-five percent, um, without encumbrances included. We still have several departments that are over, and that's again due to the annual expenses that we pay upfront at the each year, being dues to lots of organizations, service contracts, and, um, workers' comp insurance and other, um, general liability insurance. You also have sales tax reports showing the collections through August two thousand twenty-two, and at this point, we are about thirteen percent ahead of the same timeframe last year. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Lisa on behalf of Candace? Any questions?
None here.
No questions, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
County Manager's Monthly Report for November two thousand twenty-two, Dr. Crumpson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we'll start with the Moore Training Facility next door. Um, I did get an update from TerraQuest today, um, so it's an update from the report that's in front of you. They have put the new wells in around the solder tank, um, and they have asked for the letter of no further action on all the other schmooze, which totaled twenty-two, so we are hopeful that we will get those. And then the only thing that would be, uh, up in the air is when they would give us no further action on the solder tank. There is another, oh, no, there is another, uh, vacuuming event, uh, going on right now around the solder tank, and they should be finished with that in December. Horton Pool, the project's back on, on track, um, we've approved, uh, the change order for the unsuitable soils underneath the bathhouse building, and all of that unsuitable soil is now gone, and they are putting the new soil or rocks in place to shore things up there, so it looks good. The pool contractor obtained the permit since the last, uh, board meeting with the, with our health department, demolition work is complete, and they've actually started construction on the new pool. The revised timeline has substantial completion of this project on May one, uh, thirty days ahead of opening date, which is Memorial Day weekend. The Health Center bids came in almost twice what was budgeted for the HVAC upgrade, so we're holding those bids and probably will reject them all. Staff concerned about rising costs and the time it will take to complete that project, but we are still getting the roofing, um, bid, to see where that comes in. And, uh, we'll talk with the Board in December about what to do about that project. That project has kind of gotten a little, from a pricing standpoint, and how long it will take to do kind of, um, out of hand at this point, so very frustrating. Uh, the historic courthouse, staff is working, uh, on the architect contract, and we hope to have that at the December fifth meeting. Um, Library Building, we're still working on that, and moving forward, under your, uh, meeting schedule or upcoming events, November twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, the county offices are closed for Thanksgiving holiday. December fifth is the newly elected Commissioner's swearing-in ceremony and our organizational meeting, so we still need to discuss with the Board what time that meeting needs to start, since the city's, uh, Christmas parade starts at six o'clock that night. That meeting is scheduled for the McSwain Center, so we are out of the way, but I know there'll be some that want to attend the Christmas party, so maybe we need to start that earlier in the day at some point. Um, and then December nineteenth, uh, we have a meeting here, and then our offices are closed on the twenty-third, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh of December, and January second for New Year's holiday. That's my report, sir.
Do you have a recommended time on the December fifth meeting?
Well, we're going to leave that up to the newly elected folks that discuss tonight. Um, you know, I think if staff had our way, we'd have it, uh, around three o'clock in the afternoon, so everybody could be done by five, but I know Dr. Connect has issues with three o'clock, so maybe we need to do it during his lunch hour at twelve o'clock.
Dr. Connect, any questions, any comments? Twelve o'clock?
Sounds great.
Twelve o'clock for it.
We'll feed you.
I might be leaving early, depending on how long it goes.
So the organizational meeting, you want it set for twelve o'clock? That's a question.
Can everybody make twelve o'clock? Taylor?
I can make it.
December fifth organizational meeting, twelve o'clock.
Mr. Reeves has not heard that yet.
Will the swearing-in ceremony be prior to or starting at twelve? I think that's-
I, I put in a request for a special guest in for the morning, yes.
For the morning. What, what time?
Oh, time in the morning? I don't have an answer yet. Depends on their schedule.
Commissioner Reeves didn't hear about the, the noon time?
The December fifth meeting always conflicts with the Sanford Christmas Parade. Uh, Commissioner, the, uh, County Manager recommended three o'clock. Commissioner Connect has issues with his employment, so wish, working on twelve o'clock. So far, everybody can make twelve o'clock on the fifth of December.
Does that work for Commissioner Connect?
Yes, sir.
I'm fine.
Thank you.
In any case, you have to have the swearing-in before, right?
That's correct. Everybody's got to be sworn in before, before the organizational meeting.
All right, so is that a motion to move the meeting to the twelve o'clock on the fifth of December at the McSwain Center?
So moved.
Motion's been made, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
That's it for me, sir.
Okay. Uh, we're going to go into closed session here, so we'll work with Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Lovick.
Um, I know Veterans Day is, I, I already passed, but it's a great time, any time to acknowledge our veterans. Um, I was fortunate enough that the county, um, hosted the facility with a meal from Miller Bowls, and great turnout, see our veterans there, was able to attend that, and it was great for that. Uh, I was going to tell everybody, but some of you still see, thanks for all you come out tonight. I think that's, every person's right to come out during times when they, um, have feelings one way or the other on situations for our county, and I, I think that's very good that people come out. Um, I know I'm shaking each one of his hands, but congratulations to each ones for reelection, and, uh, congrats for the recognition, the night, special recognition to each of you, so been a pleasure working with you, Ms. Lavalley. I've known you as a friend, so enjoy. That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yeah, I want to share some good news as a result of the county investing in the Brick Capital Project on Washington Avenue. I'm looking at a copy of a letter sent to the mayor. It says, City of Sanford has been awarded four-point-nine million dollars for the Washington Avenue project and a grant for Jackson Heights. And that's all, in my opinion, can be attributed to our investment in the Brick Capital Project. When they came down on the twentieth, when they being commerce came down, I invited them to take a tour over at the Horton Park and explain what we were doing when we invested the eight fifty. And later on, took them out to Jackson Heights to show that Brick Capital was building, had already built five new houses out there, but there's no sidewalks, no curb and gutter and any of that stuff. And so they awarded them money to improve that neighborhood as well. So again, thank the Board for its support.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not making official, this is for the city, but I got news of it, too.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I wasn't expecting a vote on the Life Springs Dream Center tonight, but, um, I am glad that the county's money is going to something that will help folks in our community. Uh, and just to reiterate, Life Springs does good things in the community. I'd just like to add that, and, uh, best wishes to Ms. Lavalley.
Thank you.
And your future endeavors.
Thank you.
I've deeply enjoyed my time here on the Board. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about my father, Frank, who so much encouraged me and gave me the, the courage to step up in this way, and, um, to reiterate what Commissioner Reeves said about your spouse being such an important piece, um, I stepped onto this Board as a Del Palazzo, and I'm leaving this Board as a Lavalley, um, and I'm excited for, for my future ahead. I'm excited for Lee County. We, um, have seen such growth over the last four years, I'm just thinking about what we've gone through, um, with hurricanes, with COVID, and how through it, our Board continually put Lee County first. We made a lot of great decisions, and, um, seeing the economic development we've had working with Saga, um, and, and in those times where we see growth, we're still remembering the other parts of our community, focusing on Horton Pool and just so many beautiful parts about our county that, um, I'm so proud of, and I'm excited for this new generation coming into Lee County. I, it's a wonderful place to live, it's a great place to raise children, and, um, I would also just want to conclude encouraging young people here in Lee County to step up, to get involved, because this- because this is our county, this is our future and we should have a voice in it. I'm so excited for Taylor Borbeck, who will be taking my seat. She's a phenomenal lady and I think she'll serve this board well. So thank you, Dr. Crumpton, thank you, staff, thank you to this board for the time that we've had together and I'm excited for what Lee County will accomplish in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
I hope Mr. Spivey has a wonderful retirement and those are gonna be big shoes to fill. Mr. Reeves, congratulations on your award, well deserved, and look forward to working with you another four years. Ms. Lovale, it's been an absolute pleasure. I hope you have a wonderful, wonderful retirement.
Yeah, right.
Future endeavors and it was an absolute pleasure. Thank you.
Commissioner Karma?
It is an interesting observation that you're retiring before most people ever take up the gauntlet, but it's great. And of course, welcoming Taylor, who's here tonight. I'm glad that she's there to take your place. I just wanted to make one quick comment. I replaced the commissioner, I'm sorry, the chairman, on the Board of Delegates for Triangle J Council of Government and I've gone to a couple meetings and then some seminars and things. And one thing that became very clear in the most recent seminar was the importance of the being able to continue to retain our people. Evidently, throughout North Carolina, it's really a big problem. And not only retaining them here, but having other counties try to take our people away and then as you recognize, the importance of being able to look at what kind of competition we have in the public sector, or I'm sorry, the private sector, is important. So I'm really glad that we're taking a close look at how we're gonna do our pay and classifications going forward into 2023. Other than that, I just want to echo the congratulations to all the people who got reelected and I know that Commissioner Reeves did it the easy way. He wasn't, didn't find anybody running against him and he did really well in the race. I think he got the most votes in District 1. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you, sir. I too wish to echo my congratulations to those winners as well as I want to say thank you, Arianna, for your service. You'll be missed. Just to reiterate that Veterans' Day was on Friday. I was heading through the storm over the mountains during the celebration here in Lee County, but I do want to recognize Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, World War II pilot Mark Joseph Gillis, who passed away on 8 November of 2022. There's not a whole lot of our, what we title the finest generation remaining, but as they go, we should recognize them. This weekend, we were in Tennessee doing an 18th century fort out in the middle of nowhere and a gentleman who was a photographer, I made mention I was from Sanford, I didn't say what I did, and he come right out and said, "Oh, Sanford, I've been to the enrichment center, they have a fantastic crafts fair, I was just there a few weeks ago." And he's a photographer from Fayetteville, so I didn't say anything, I just noted it and I want to compliment the enrichment center and the staff for putting on a fantastic, you hear about it in Tennessee, it's gotta be good. So just want to say thank you. I will want to make a special note on election night. The Broadway School parking lights, the lights in the parking lot didn't turn on. And I've been working the Broadway precinct for years and years and years and when it gets night and dark, everything lights up and you can see everything. Well, you had people parking in that U driveway, walking across the lawn with signs and obstacles and you couldn't see a thing and it was just amazing. So the Board of Elections was notified, we had a state Board of Elections supervisor there and she was kind of interesting. Jane Fawcett got on the phone, called the police chief of Broadway, police chief called the fire department and within 10 minutes, they had a fire truck there with lights going up so that everybody could see on the last few hours of voting before they tripped on the hazards of the lawn. So I want to say thank you to Jane for being creative, calling the sheriff, or excuse me, the police chief of Broadway and then turnaround, the fire department for coming to the aid of the voters on election day. I have nothing further, I do wish to ask that we go into closed session and read the three requirements.
I don't know that I have that in front of me.
I can offer the language if you would like.
Sure.
Okay, the language would read, motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A4 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business, a Section A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of an officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee, and Section A3 to consult with our attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. Move to approve.
Thank you.
Motion's been made to approve the going into closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And we're going into the room across the way. Okay. See you all there and within 10 minutes. Thank you. The
Yep, we can still hear. Just fine.
Thank you.
I want to start with...
But I...
You go for your direction.
Yeah, I agree. We're now back in the open session. Commissioner LaValle?
Yes, I make a motion we authorize counsel/legal/administration to negotiate, mitigate, administratively resolve, and/or pursue legal action or resolution with the City of Sanford regarding the issue of the county's property off Tabitha Lane and authorize the Chair to sign any documents necessary to proceed with any such actions deemed time-sensitive and report to the Board any action taken.
You've heard the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of Dr. Crumpton's resignation.
Retirement letter.
Excuse me, retirement letter, excuse me. He's resigning to retire.
Move to accept.
Motion's been made to accept Dr. Crumpton's retirement letter. Any further discussion? Commissioner Lovick?
May I?
Commissioner Carm... Commissioner Sharp, I'm sorry.
We're giving you one last chance to change.
Commissioner LaValle?
You will be greatly missed.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
No comment.
I don't have anything else other to say that you're going to be missed. All those in favor of accepting Dr. Crumpton's retirement letter signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Please note the record, the one opposed. I do appreciate that very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're now adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and...